I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Department of Airports for Oxnard and Camarillo. And before we do that, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Bill, can you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Okay, for Camarillo Airport Authority Supervisor Long, Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Councilmember Mulche has been excused. Councilmember Santangelo has been excused. Bill Thomas.
Here.
Camarillo does not have a quorum, but there are no items before the Camarillo Authority. For Oxnard Airport Authority Supervisor Long, Supervisor Zaragosa.
Here.
Mayor Flynn.
Here.
Councilmember Parello, Walter Calhoun, Eugene Fussell. Oxnard has a quorum.
We have a quorum. Thank you so much. Item number three is approval of the minutes for September 12th, 2019. And this is for Oxnard only. What's the pleasure of the board?
My motion approved.
Second. There are first and a second. Long and Parello, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Public comments. I have one card for public comments, and it's William Bab, is that correct?
Correct.
Got three minutes. Three minutes.
My email has a bad tendency of throwing away mails that it doesn't get very often. So I didn't get this email from Kip until I found it in my trash bin. It was talking about the lease agreement and the progress that's being made on that. And I'm sure somebody before me has had an opportunity to make comments before you folks on this letter before now. But inasmuch as I just found it, I want to make mine now. It looks like a couple of things. The last big thing, as you all know, was the ad hoc committee. The ad hoc committee was pretty much of a flop, a failure. The next proposal that came out of that was this reversion of the owned hangars after a 15-year period to the county. I see in this latest letter that the reversion has been dropped, but I think that's kind of transparent, that after 15 or 20 years as this thing lays out, you either have to move your hangar or something. Now, we all know that moving these hangars is expensive. My hangar was built in place. That means they brought in a bunch of steel, welded it together, framed it, built a door on site, put the sheeting on, and installed the door, and that was it. For me to move that hangar, I would have to deconstruct it. The door is in three pieces. It cannot be moved. It has to be sawed into— it is in one piece. It'll have to be sawed into three pieces to be moved. The building itself will have to be sawed in half, put on a trailer, if I can find a trailer big enough, and then moved out. Now, you can understand my concern with that is that's expensive. And in 15 or 20 years, it's even going to be more expensive. So the provisions of this—the proposed provisions of the new lease is although there's no reversion, what are you going to do with the hangar? Well, gee, guys, I guess you'll just have to leave it. And if I leave it, it becomes county property. So that's a reversion by default. And it's just another way to assume my hangar without really paying for it. And there are many other provisions in here. This open-end lease business is completely against what we understood we were going to have to suffer, and—
Thank you, William. And I'm sure the staff is listening and taking notes of this item. Kip, I know that's not in the agenda, but I'm sure that Kip will continue working. Kip?
Yeah, I would normally not ask to comment, but just for clarity, it might help Mr. Bab on the way out tonight. There are other options that the individuals would have upon the completion of the term. We would hope, first and foremost, that they would want to renegotiate another new lease and stay at the airport for another 20 years. That would be the first hope. The second hope is, of course, they would sell it to someone that would still use it as a hangar, and we'd have a lease with someone else for another term for whatever that is, as a hangar. That was only put in there to show them that it truly is their property, and they have the option to either sell it, go into a new lease, or if they were to want to move it—there have been people that in the past have wanted to do that.
Thank you. And so, William, you get together with Kip, you know, and maybe you can work something out with an extended lease.
I would like to meet you sometime.
Thank you, sir.
And, you know, I could give you my thoughts.
Yeah.
All I'm looking for is a fair lease.
Yes.
I'm not going to be at the airport, certainly not for another 10 years, but I want to make sure I realize the most value out of my hangar when I do decide to sell it.
We appreciate that. You can give your phone number to our clerk, you know. Thank you so much for your testimony.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, our next item is item five, unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business. So then, item then is Oxnard Airport Authority, and item A, subject would be approval unauthorized for the Director of Airports and his designee to execute the First Amendment to the License and Use Agreement with T-Mobile West LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, successor in the interest to Pacific Bell Wireless LLC for a cellar tower at Oxnard Airport, and to provide it for additional options, extensions, increased rent, and make other changes. Kip, are you—
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just as a summary, in the last Airport Authorities meeting that we had, this item was brought before the Oxnard Airport Authority at that time in September for approval in response to a question from the Authority members during that meeting to verify if the lease provides for the Department of Airports to redevelop and make changes to the airport properly and control tower in the leased area by tenant, including removal and relocation. The department responds affirmatively that it does have those rights in the existing lease. And so, we were just bringing it back for that purpose.
For that purpose.
And actually, Madeline's here, and if you've got other questions, she's the one that's—
Do you have any questions, the staff? Commissioners? Any questions, the staff?
Thank you for looking into that. I really do appreciate the thoroughness of our contracts. It's important that we do that.
Just one question.
Parello?
Page 5A2, under the premises, it's talking about an existing shed. Are we responsible for the shed, or is the mobile?
T-Mobile.
Mobile? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, the staff?
No, we're just looking for the consent, the approval.
Okay.
My motion approved.
Second.
Got a first and a second. Long and Parello, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? That's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. So our next item is Oxnard Airport Authority, again, this is 6A. This is the recent filed report concerning the status of the proposal by Oxnard School District to construct two schools at the intersection of Doris and Patterson, and receive and file report from the Ventura Local Agency Formation Commission concerning the annexation process of the district's proposed school site at the intersection of Doris and Patterson Road, and approve and authorize the chairperson to send a letter on behalf of the Oxnard Airport Authority to the city of Oxnard objecting to the annexation of the Oxnard School District's property for the purpose of constructing schools. Kip?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. As the September 2019 meeting, the Authority requested that staff revisit the status of the Teal Club's specific planned project in Oxnard School District's proposed school sites at the intersection of Doris Avenue and Patterson Road. Your Authority was especially concerned about the potential annexation of the district to the city of Oxnard. As such, staff has invited a representative from LAFCO, Mr. Kai Lawama?
Kai.
Okay, Kai, to present the process that the district would need to go through in order to be annexed to the city. And additionally, staff prepared the following four or five pages, which I won't read unless you want me to, summary report in response to your request. So between the report that we have in the agenda packet and with Kai here, I'd turn it over to Kai unless you have any questions for—
I just want to ask one quick question. Kai, maybe Kai, because I, by the way, I am also a member of LAFCO, you know, and I've been a member of LAFCO for many, many years. The decision that we're making today, will there be a potential conflict with LAFCO?
No, none whatsoever.
And the reason I'm asking that, Kai, is because, as we all know, when we—even though I'm a Board Supervisor, we have council members here, and we always put our authority hat on, take it off, and then we become Supervisors, and we go to LAFCO, we put our LAFCO hats on and make policy according to LAFCO law. I'm just going to assure that, you know, just—
Right, that's correct.
Great. So Kai, you're going to make the pres— are you next?
Yeah, Sheriff.
I have one question on the staff report. I appreciate all the information you've got in the staff report.
Yes, sir.
The question I have is on page 6A3, the very last line. It says, under E, "District provide fair disclosure to parents of the average and single event noise due to fixed winged aircraft." What about helicopters?
Helicopters could definitely— rotary could definitely be added to that, yes.
Yeah, in fact, just to add a little bit more, the SOAR school is right in the path of the Aspen helicopter approaches.
Yeah, the only thing I would add about rotary is oftentimes rotary may have different approach paths of a different nature that's not always following the same approach path that the fixed-wing aircraft may be following. So we could definitely add it for having an all-in type inclusiveness, but most likely it may or may not apply as much to rotary depending on the pathway that they're being guided in from the control tower. But just to be sure, we could add it, and that would definitely cover it.
Okay, then Kai?
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Good evening, everyone. I'm Kai. I'm the executive officer for Ventura Local Agency Formation Commission, and I'm here just to give kind of a really a broad overview of the LAFCO process and the different processes that are necessary to be conducted to end up at LAFCO, and they go through the LAFCO process. So the proposed development includes actually two schools. It includes an elementary school for up to 700 students. It also includes a middle school for up to 1,200 students. And then there's a school district administrative center that's also included. And there's approximately—all of these different uses would be in about 180,000 square feet of buildings and structures. So you're looking at about—between students and staff, about 2,000 people occupying this site. Water, sewer, and other services, like police and fire, are going to be provided by the city of Oxnard. That's the plan, and that's why LAFCO is involved. For those of you who are not familiar with LAFCO, LAFCO has jurisdiction over the boundaries and service areas of all the cities and special districts of Ventura County. So LAFCO approval will be required in one form or another in order for water, sewer, and these other services to be extended to the site of the school. So this is an aerial view of the site. It's on about 20 acres here in yellow. This, of course, is Patterson Road and Doris Avenue. Teal Club is down here, and of course, the airport is here. Like I said, it's about 20 acres. The black line represents the current boundaries—sorry, I don't want to get you in the eye—the current boundaries of the city here. And this dash line is the sphere of influence. The sphere of influence is established by LAFCO, and it means—it basically means that LAFCO recognizes that eventually this area is anticipated to be annexed to Oxnard at some point. It's not specified when, but at some point. So according to LAFCO policies, in order for services to be extended to this site, because it is abutting the city, LAFCO policies require that it be annexed into the city. And again, that's why LAFCO is involved in this process. So there's really three processes that are going to happen here. First is the school district process, and I'll talk about each of these here briefly. Then there's the city of Oxnard process, and then there's the LAFCO process. The LAFCO process comes at the tail end. The school district process, it's pretty much completed. If you don't know this, school districts essentially have their own land use authority. They do not have to abide by general planned land use designations of cities or counties. They don't have to abide by zoning. They can pretty much build a school at any spot they want regardless of what the local land use policies say. So they can basically approve the school. Now, this is subject to the state architect's approval, but essentially, they do have this land use authority. As the land use authority, they are required under SEQA to be the lead agency, and they would be responsible for preparing and adopting an EIR, which they have done. And then they become the applicant to the city for annexation. So they have to request that the city pursue annexation. And that then turns over to the city process. Now, because this is a school, the city has no land use authority over the school. The city can't deny the construction of the school. It just doesn't have that authority. But the city does have authority over the annexation process, complete an entire authority over the annexation process. So if the city does wish to pursue that annexation, it's going to have to do a number of things, and I've outlined them here. As far as I know, it's a fairly comprehensive list. One of the first things that's going to have to happen is the city is going to have to execute a property tax sharing agreement with the county. There used to be a master tax sharing agreement that applied to all annexations. However, that was allowed to expire, or action was taken to cancel it last year. So for every annexation for the city, a new tax sharing agreement would have to be executed. The city would have to conduct an alternative sites analysis. This is a LAFCO policy. The city has to show that this is the only feasible spot for these schools. The city's going to have to amend the general planned land use designation. That's if it's not consistent with the school use now. This is under the LAFCO law. It's also LAFCO policies. The city's also going to have to prezone the area consistent with the school use. This is a requirement under LAFCO law. It's called a prezone because it doesn't become effective until the site is actually annexed into the city, and then that zoning becomes the effective zoning. The city's going to have to amend the curb, and the city's going to have to amend the greenbelt agreement with the county and the city of Ventura. Now, this is because Patterson Avenue is going to have to be widened. Additional right-of-way is going to have to be obtained to the west of the site. That area is in a greenbelt, and it's outside the curb. So both of those actions are going to have to occur. Excuse me. The city's going to have to develop what's called a plan for services, and that is—it's a plan that's going to be submitted to LAFCO that demonstrates how the city is actually going to provide the services to the school, how they're going to be financed, and whether they're adequate or not. That will be up to LAFCO to evaluate. Then as a SEQA responsible agency, the city will have to adopt the EIR prepared by the school district. And then the city's going to have to adopt a resolution of application to LAFCO. This basically authorizes the designated staff to submit that application to LAFCO, and only then can the city apply to LAFCO for an annexation. Now, what's interesting here, as I said, the city has authority over the annexation process. All of these actions are city council actions. So if the city council determines that this is not an appropriate spot for a school, the city council does not have to pursue annexation. It is completely discretionary. The city is not obligated to do this. But if the city does—
One question.
Does LAFCO fall under state or county?
State.
You say LAFCO law, but it has to—you report to somebody. So who do you report to?
We actually report—the commission reports to nobody. The commission is a truly independent state agency.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay.
Kai, is—so Teal Club Road has to be also improved, right?
Yeah, I can show you. So you see, Patterson Road is really wide here, and the plan is to have it as wide. I think it's four lanes and a turn lane all the way down here. The design of the school that I've seen has the schools getting access onto here. So at a minimum, they're going to have to improve Patterson here to four or five lanes. That means they're going to have to obtain agricultural land out in this area. Now, this is all within the greenbelt, and it's all outside the curb. That's why the curb needs to be amended, and the greenbelt would need to be amended. Now, remember, admitting the greenbelt's also going to require approval from the city of Ventura and the county Board of Supervisors.
Supervisor.
So I noticed you did not speak about the FAA requirements, any of the buffer zones and so forth. I noticed that there—you have your airstrip, and we have a huge buffer zone even from those buildings that are not—
Right.
—that many people. And then even to the next street, and even that soccer area, there's a senior area that's really far away that is still within that buffer zone. So if you just transfer that into the other side, wouldn't that be touching the property which is in the consideration?
Is in the TPZ? Are you talking about the—
Yeah.
Yeah, this entire area is in the TPZ.
Okay, so you didn't mention it yet.
Right, right. And that's—because I haven't got to the LAFCO part yet. So at this point, that's something that the city can consider.
And there's an easement—excuse me. There's also an easement there on Teal Club Road, between Teal Club Road and the airport. There's an air easement there.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's something that the city would need to consider before it even comes to LAFCO. So if the city says this is not a good use under this TPZ, we don't want to pursue annexation because we don't want the school here. They can—I, you know, and I hate to use the word "stop," you know, the development, but the city can do that if they choose to. So it's up to the city. Remember, the city is going to be the applicant to LAFCO, not the school district.
Great.
Question on the next slide, please.
That one?
Okay, this—you have a prezone?
What bullet point is that?
The bullet point. One, two, three, the fourth.
Fourth.
So if this thing—we're going to prezone it. Does the zone go with the land? The prezone go with the land? Suppose, just suppose, it falls through. Now, the school district has a piece of property that's been upgraded?
No, 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 no. The city doesn't have the authority to zone land outside the city boundaries. This is just a prezone. It doesn't become effective until the annexation occurs. You can prezone anything you want, wherever you want. It doesn't mean anything until an annexation into the city occurs.
Okay, and the second question you've mentioned about Patterson Road and greenbelt. Isn't that in the SOAR? Is there going to be an issue with SOAR, having to take that property from the landowner there?
Well, there's—a yeah, greenbelt's different from SOAR. So there's a greenbelt agreement between the cities of Ventura, Oxnard, and the county, saying that there will be no development, and Oxnard will not pursue annexation, nor will Ventura, of any land in the greenbelt. So if there's a justifiable reason, the greenbelt can be amended, and they have before, to say, yeah, this makes sense to widen this, so let's amend the greenbelt. And that can be done. It's just—you have to go through that process. Now, regarding SOAR, the curb boundary is here along the sphere of influence. So that will have to be amended. Now, there's provisions in Oxnard SOAR ordinance that do allow for the city council to amend the SOAR if it's for like a public benefit. It's for a public use like a road. So it will have to be amended, but most likely, it can happen at the city council level and not go to the public vote. But again, it's going to take three city council people to do that.
Or four now, right?
And the last—in the last question. In the upper left-hand corner, I think that's part of the high school's property. How did the high school get to be able to go into the middle of an agricultural field and still be allowed to go there if they needed water, sewer, and public safety? How did that happen with—what did you guys do?
We haven't done anything yet. It has not come to LAFCO. So—
So the school is not in the city of Oxnard?
No, you're talking of the vacant or the high school?
No, no, I'm talking about Oxnard High School, the existing—
Oh, Oxnard. Oh, 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 oh. Yeah, so I wasn't around when that all happened, but my understanding is it is not in the city. But there were provisions prior to some changes in the law that allowed for services to be extended outside city boundaries without a requirement to annex. And apparently, that's what happened.
And Kai, too, what happened, too, the Oxnard was kind of condemned by the state because it was right in the path of the airport and the old high school site.
Oh, right, right.
And we had to move Oxnard High School, and that was one of the conditions, too, that happened and also is part of the approval of building that new school.
Absolutely. Now, that couldn't happen—to—I mean, it could happen today, but LAFCO has adopted policies to prevent that from happening again, that if you need urban services, you need to annex into that provider of those services. In this case, it's the city.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay, so assuming the city goes through all these processes and obtains all these approvals, then an application can be made to LAFCO for the actual annexation. Now, for the LAFCO process—
I'm sorry, Kai.
Yes?
Can you go back to the first bullet point? The execution of property tax sharing agreement has to happen before we can—the city can apply for annexation, or—
The city can apply, but we cannot deem the application complete—
Until the—
—until we get that.
The tax sharing agreement.
Right. So it would make more sense to pursue that agreement.
Initially.
Yeah, initially, before spending the fees and preparing the application, because it'll be a waste of time if you can't get that agreement.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So then the LAFCO process starts. So it's pretty basic. I mean, you know, the staff would accept an application from the city. We would take time to evaluate the proposal for consistency with LAFCO law and local LAFCO policies. The commission would then consider staff analysis and staff's recommendation at a public hearing. We would also be serving as a SEQA responsible agency, so we would be adopting the EIR as well that was prepared by the school. And then the commission would make a determination, either approval or disapproval. And approval—and actually, disapproval in this case—starts a 30-day reconsideration period during which anybody could say, we have new information that wasn't considered by the commission, so we want you to reconsider the determination. After that 30-day reconsideration period, assuming any conditions that might have been applied or met, then we can record the approval, and then that area formally becomes part of the city. It is now annexed to the city, and in this case, then the school can move forward with construction. So I want to touch just a little bit on some of the policies I was talking about. So these are policies that our commission has adopted locally. The first one applies to the applicable consistency with the applicable general plan, like I mentioned. It provides, unless exceptional circumstances are shown, LAFCO will not approve a proposal unless it is consistent with the applicable general plan. In this case, that's going to be the city general plan. So we will be looking at that consistency. Goes back to the city may need to amend the general plan to ensure that. And that's just the section—that number there in parentheses is the section of what we call the commissioner's handbook. It's their book of policies. The second bullet point, this is regarding the SOAR ordinance, so and the curb. For cities that have enacted ordinances that require voter approval for the extension of services or for changing general plan designations, LAFCO will not approve a proposal unless it is consistent with such ordinances. That goes back to the curb needs to be amended. The third bullet point, LAFCO will not approve a proposal from a city that is in conflict with any greenbelt agreement unless exceptional circumstances are shown to exist. Again, that speaks to the need to amend.
So Kai, then, Oxnard would have to go out and not only work on the annexation with LAFCO, but also with the city of Ventura, to come up with an agreement in the greenbelt?
And it's—
We've had—the greenbelt agreement's been on for years, you know.
Right, and the county, county board.
And the county, too.
And an example of that would be the Rancho Campaña High School, if everyone recalls that.
Camarillo.
Camarillo. The city of Camarillo had to put that vote in the community to get that annexed, and I believe that was SOAR, wasn't it? Or am I wrong?
That was—it was in SOAR, but because it was a public facility, it was exempt from having to go to a public vote. But they still did have to amend the curb, and the city council was able to do that.
And the exemption of facilities in SOAR would be a school, farm worker, project, and others. What—there's a couple of others.
Yeah, depending. Roads, like general planned designated roads are typically exempt from curb.
That are exempt from.
Yeah, other public facilities. For instance, Camarillo's doing their desalter, their groundwater desalter. That was exempt from SOAR, and we annexed that in, and so that wasn't an issue.
Okay.
Okay. And then more specific to the airport issue and LAFCO policies. We don't have any policies that specifically talk about airports, but we have policies that do touch on areas that are—that can be hazardous. So among the factors unfavorable to approval of an annexation are the proposal is inconsistent with state law, adopted spheres of influence, adopted general or specific plans, adopted habitat conservation plans or restoration —or, excuse me, restoration plans, and other applicable plans adopted by any governmental agency or these policies. So, you know, the airport land use plan, I believe it's called, we will be looking for consistency with that plan. Now, remember, the— Now, remember, these are not set in stone, the commission can, you know, still approve it, you know, but would have to justify why it's doing it against these policies. The second one, annexation would encourage a type of development in an area that due to terrain, isolation, or other economic or social reason is not in the public interest. If the commission determines that this is not a safe area for a school, we would consider that not in the public interest. And the third bullet point, the proposal would accommodate new development and includes a tsunami inundation zone, wildfire hazard area, FEMA designated floodway or floodplain, or other hazardous area designated by federal, state, or local public agencies, unless it's mitigated. So again, this goes back to if it's designated as a hazardous area by any public agency, that's going to be a consideration of the commission on whether this is an appropriate use. And that really, that's, that's all I've got.
Any questions of Kai on Lafco? We'll start off with Dr., go ahead, Dr.
Yeah, I, I need you to educate me. I understand that Lafco is an independent agency in every county in the state of California.
That's right.
And by them being an independent agency, I mean, I'm worried about the authority. They don't have to answer to, who do they answer to? They have to answer to the state, they don't have to answer to the city. They just do stuff.
It's the state.
Yeah, that's how it was set up. So yes, the commission does not answer to anybody. The legislature establishes the laws that the commission does implement, but aside from that, they take no actual oversight of the commission actions. So absent some wrongdoing or malfeasance during the process, that can be overturned in court, the commission is a quasi-legislative body that does not answer to anybody.
Hurstburg law.
Yeah, yeah, it's called the Cortezi-Nox-Hurstburg Local Government Organization Act of 2001 is the body of law that establishes Lafco and that we operate.
Kai, 25 words or less, you might want to show why Lafco was formed, so.
25 words or less. Lafcos were started back in 1963, basically to address all of the sprawl that was going on post-World War II in California. It was started by Jerry Brown, Pat Brown.
No, Pat Brown.
And the reason was that there was no comprehensive agency or entity overseeing planning, and as a result, you had cities fighting cities and districts fighting districts, just trying to annex all of these different communities in haphazard ways. It led to inefficient services, it led to premature conversion of agriculture on open space, and just these inefficiencies and illogical boundaries. So the states basically said, we need someone to come in and provide some oversight to these decision-makers who weren't always making the best decisions. And that's basically the background for Lafcos. And then over the preceding decades, Lafcos have become, I mean, have more influence, they've been given more responsibilities, and their responsibilities expand seemingly every year.
And there's Lafcos throughout California.
Yeah, there's 58 Lafcos, there's 58 counties.
Okay, Bill?
So it appears that one of the other logical things is that you are not under the same political pressure that some of the elected sub-entities that are applying for Lafco, you can do it more on real facts and logic than the political pressures of that particular area?
Yeah, absolutely, and that goes to the makeup of the commission. So the commission's comprised of two county supervisors, two city council members, who the 10 mayors get together and choose, two board members from the independent special districts, who again are chosen by the special districts, and those six individuals choose a member of the public. So there are seven members, and they all have different backgrounds, they all come from different areas of the county, they all, they don't represent different agencies, but they come from different agencies. When they're sitting on Lafco, they're Lafco commissioners, they're not supervisors, they're not city council people, et cetera. So the makeup does, like you say, it reduces any one developer's influence or what have you on the entire commission, as they sometimes do on, like a city council, for the sake.
And as being a Lafco member, or a member too, not only as a city council member, but also as a board of supervisors, one of the things that is stressed by the attorneys, by Hurstburg law, is that you put your Lafco hat on and hopefully, you try 100% to follow Lafco law and not favor the board of supervisors or the city council or the special district or the public member. You try to follow Lafco law and normally, in fact, all the time, that's what we follow.
Absolutely.
Just for, I just wanted to kind of explain that, too.
Thanks.
Okay.
I'm sorry?
There's no land use board of appeal over there?
No, no, there is, there is nobody over Lafco. Yeah, Lafco's decisions pretty much stand.
So any question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for the presentation, and it's always enlightening when you don't serve on Lafco to understand a little bit more about it. If we could go back to the map, please, just the map, so we could kind of see this. So some of the members of the commission might be asking, well, what incentive would the city council have to go forward with allowing this change to take place? If in fact, it's the school district that would like to annex, obviously would like to build on this land, and my understanding is, I mean, you talked about the fact that the school district process is complete, they've already purchased, or they're in an agreement, I think already, with the landowner to purchase the land, and I think they've, and I know, and I brought this to the attention of the commission, because it had come to the commission before, but there have been a lot of delays, and that is because the school district changed its plan on the school site size. I think at one point, it was only going to be 700, and then they changed it to add 1,200, you know, the middle school of 1,200, so it necessitated a change. But this came before this, the airport authority once performed, and the airport authority voted unanimously to oppose all of this, really. It was, and so that's number one. So we, everyone's already gone on record, previous, you know, members of opposing this. So I guess a couple, a couple of things I'd like to say to the members. Councilman Porelo and I obviously sit on the Oxnard City Council, and you might be wondering, well, what else is behind this? Is it just the school district? In fact, it's not, and it's a pending housing proposal that would go right where you see this, let me see. Yeah, right. So this whole area there, there is a pending, sorry, there's a pending housing project proposal, and it's, I believe, part of the Teal Club Road specific plan, and it's 995 homes, and I believe it's light industrial. I think those are the proposed uses. So the question might be asked here, well, wait a minute here, why would the city council, if in fact, there were a majority of the city council that felt that this idea of placing 1,900 students right next door to an airport runway is not a smart idea, and I hope I'm not being sarcastic when I say that, that why would they even consider it? Well, I think the consideration perhaps could be connected, I would suggest, to the housing development, the 995 homes. So my question here is, is that when Lafco takes a look at all of this, could Lafco say, we don't, we're not going to allow this annexation based on, because we believe, let's say, the Lafco board determined that it was, all the criteria that you've listed here was in a hazard area, it wasn't consistent with the airport, you know, the airport plan, and it goes on and on and on. Would Lafco allow the housing development to go forward, but not the school? Could they, could they bifurcate those two issues? Or would it be just rejecting all of it, and then the school would, if Lafco rejected the school being there, would the city and/or the process of annexing the land for the homes have to come back to Lafco? Did I make myself clear? In other words?
Can you separate it?
Yeah, can it be separated? If Lafco determines this is not a good area for a school, and does not allow the annexation, could the housing development still go forward? Could Lafco make that decision to say, we don't think the housing, I mean, the school is a smart idea, for obvious reasons or for implied reasons, but we think that the housing development is consistent, or something like that? Could they make a ruling of that nature?
Yeah, oh, absolutely. I mean, they wouldn't do it as part of the school. I mean, they can deny the school for, you know, separate reasons, and then entertain anything else that the city wants to bring forward to it at a separate time.
I understand.
Absolutely, yes.
But, but it wouldn't all take place at the same time. So in other words, this would, it would be the Teal Club Road specific plan, which, I, you know, I can't remember all the specifics, but there was a big tug-of-war between the school district and the city, when the city was, I think, maybe revising its general plan, that the school district wanted language inserted, they wanted the school inserted in there, and I remember there was a big tussle over that. And I don't remember all the specifics of it, because it was several years ago that that happened. But I guess what I'm trying to figure out here is, would the city have to come back to Lafco at another date if Lafco rejected the school being there?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And we would actually prefer to see the entire area planned as one, you know, specific plan, instead of having one part of the specific plan move ahead of the rest of it. I mean, that's just, it's not bad planning, but it's better to comprehensively plan layouts, services, et cetera. We would prefer that. We actually encourage the school district to wait and move forward with the specific plan, the remainder, the rest of the specific plan. They, for their own reasons, move forward ahead of that.
I'm going to add a little bit, too.
I was reading the documents for today, and somebody referred to a 2030 plan.
That's the updated general plan.
That's our current general plan.
But I want to share something real quick, you know, the, if you remember, probably Kip wasn't here yet or anybody, but when we denied the approval of the Soria School, the airport authority, Caltrans and the state overrode us on that. And then I think even the city of Oxnard, I think, opposed it at the time. But the question here, if even if we write a letter to the city of Oxnard saying that we oppose the project and so forth, Caltrans and the school district, because they're a state entity, can override us. I think that's, I'm sure that's what happened the last time, Kip, when Todd was here.
Yeah.
That's what happened, and consequently, the question was at the time, if that was the case, then the school district was to take the liability over.
Right, in this instance, you gotta remember, Lafco implements state law, just like Caltrans, so no state law takes over, you know, another state law. The Lafco law doesn't apply to the school.
Yeah.
It applies to the city. So it's the city that has to seek this annexation if the city desires to provide services to it. So it's not an issue between Lafco and the school district law, it's Lafco and what the city can and can't.
That's one part of it, but the other part would be for the airport to say, hey, we object to the, to the project and so forth and so forth, but if, even if we write a letter, which I think we should personally, however, I believe that Caltrans and also the state can override us.
I think they can override your, your.
Our objection.
Yes.
You're just for.
I just wanted to add to the chair, thank you very much, Chair, for bringing that up, but also a big difference here is that the Soria School didn't need to be annexed, whereas this would be.
And that's the key, that's the key difference, yeah, that's why Lafco's involved here and not there.
You're absolutely right.
Yes, and I wanted to ask one final question about just, you know, the whole role of Lafco in this matter. Wouldn't, isn't it advisable that, like for a school district, is school districts just gambling that Lafco's going to approve it? Is that correct? I mean, I mean, when you listed all the criteria, which is quite extensive, about, you know, the findings that they would need to make and everything else, somehow, they wouldn't be going forward with this, I'm just thinking, trying to think logically here, they wouldn't be going forward with this unless they were confident that in fact Lafco would annex this.
Well, I suppose so. I think that the best approach to Lafco is to, would be to have the school district and the city working together to address the issues that Lafco is going to face when it comes to Lafco. That's typically how we see it. So here, I don't have a complete sense of how the city views this, this development, but I know there are some concerns. So in this case, I would think that the school district is going to be relying on the city to make a real good case to Lafco on why this should be annexed in. Now Lafco doesn't have to agree with the city, but our hope would be that the city and the district are working together if the city does want to move forward with this. I hope that answers your question.
But real quick, the other question, the other, over on page two, you know, the highlighted paragraphs from, from Caltrans is that they do not recommend, strongly, you know, they recommend strongly avoiding construction there. If the school district cannot find another feasible alternative site, and my question would be, have they found any feasible alternative site? And of course, probably maybe, there might be a Lafco consideration also.
It absolutely will be, and typically what we find with schools is that it's a feasible site because they had.
Studies.
Well, they had a study, but then they were also, they had a good deal on the land. And in this case, I believe that there was some deal with, with the landowner, and I know that's what happened out in Camarillo. And they use costs in large part to determine feasibility. We already have this, it's more feasible because we already own it, than having to go out and purchase a new piece of property. Now, from our standpoint, that doesn't always fly, we're looking at land use and logical boundaries and such, but typically, that'll be the approach in their documents.
Subvrazalong?
I had a question in regards to the attachment one. It said, based on our evaluation from the Department of Transportation Division of Aeronautics, that the existing conditions in plane development, these sites are considered to provide a minimum level of safety suitable for a children's school site. I have great concern on that. We have a fine example of what happened on Tuesday. Where a plane that went down in Camarillo, not on airport property, and luckily, it was in a field, so no other persons were affected, except for the unfortunate death of the pilot. So this letter is dated in 2002. Is there any way to get an updated look at things and how everything should be looked at and with FAA? I just, I have great concern that, I didn't see anything that talked about risk and what the risk is at an airport, and you yourself stated that airports weren't, aren't called out specifically. And so I'm just, I have great concern of this, that this is not the appropriate based on, on risk. And I don't know if we evaluate that, like, how many risks or how many deaths do we have in this area in a timestamp of 10 years or something like that, like, I don't know.
Page three, there's, there's a proposed, proposal says if the place is found unacceptable for the following reasons, page three, number one.
6A3.
6A3, yeah. And it talks about, A, the site is located within the airport traffic pattern zone, is considered to be unacceptable, used pursuant to the Ventura County Airport, comprehensive airland use, the site lies within the established patterns where helicopters depart and arrive, you know, and so forth, and the site is located outside the zone, and it, and it talks about the different items or why it's unacceptable, too, you know, which I think is extremely important.
And these are all issues that are probably in the EIR, evaluated in the EIR, but this is, you know, the city is going to have to weigh all these concerns, whether the city wants to pursue the annexation. The city is first going to have to evaluate whether it thinks that this is an appropriate site for a school. So it, and depending on what the city does, Lafco may or may not have to weigh in, but those are all questions that the city should be asking before it proceeds.
Mayor?
Yeah, and one of the other things in the report, in the staff report, now, I just reread this portion of it, is that.
What page is that, Mr.?
It's on page 6A3, and it, or, and it says, page three on the top, but on the bottom right, 6A3. And what it says here at the end of the first paragraph is that when the 2030 plan, this now, now I recall this, the 2030 plan was being redone from the 2020 plan, so when the 2030 plan, general plan was, was, the process was taking place, the city originally was not going to include the school, but there was a lot of friction between the school district and the city, and it even says in the staff report, and I'm only reading from the staff report, I'm not expressing my own opinion, it said that, in the DOAs, understanding that the city initially removed the school site from the draft 2030 general plan, but later added it back after receiving pressure from the district, and I just, this whole issue about alternative sites, alternative sites, so largely speaking, I mean, I won't weigh into the issue about whether school districts engage in urban sprawl or not, there's certainly a lot of literature on that, but school districts, for the most part, when they develop schools, the reason why they go for raw land and why they, they want larger school sites rather than smaller ones, is economy of scale. I mean, they, I've trustees, I've spoken with trustees about this, and that the larger the land, the larger the school, the better, the lower the cost is per square foot to do it. So in their opinion, it's far more expensive to acquire sites in infill sites, and because they're going to be smaller, and it's not going to be as large as. and because they're going to be smaller, and it's not going to be as large as this potential site is. So, I just think there are so many factors here, and I would agree with the presentation, that a lot's going to depend on the city council. And my last question is, would, if the city council, for some reason, so it's gonna, the city council's going to take this... Well, the city council has no jurisdiction over the school, but if for some reason, the city council did not approve the housing project, and I suggested this when we brought this issue up or last time, that we'd bring this issue up. If the city council says no to the proposal to build 995 homes, would that then become a dilemma for LAFCO because LAFCO policies state that you don't want an island? It has to be contiguous with the city limits here. So, you would have, if that, if the housing development were rejected, you would have a big open space of land, and that wouldn't then be contiguous with the boundaries here. And that the school district office and the schools would be an island. Would that, is that true?
Well, it wouldn't be an island, but it would be essentially a peninsula, you know, extending out into the unincorporated area. That in and of itself isn't necessarily a problem. We would be looking for this. If the rest of the area didn't get developed, we would be looking at it under the assumption that it's going to stay ag. And so, do we really want a school surrounded on three sides by commercial agricultural activities? So, that will be a concern of LAFCO when we look at this. And if the district or the school doesn't build in adequate buffers from that surrounding ag land, then that can be an issue.
And the last question is, and I'm not, I'm trying to avoid asking you questions about the rationale of what the city did back at this time period, but I know there was a lot of going back and forth. But there's been a lot of concerns that have actually come to our council about just agricultural uses being adjacent to schools. Real Mesa is an example of that. And I just, obviously, the land on the other side of Patterson is in Sora Protected area. And my question in this regard is, is that has the county, I don't know if, I didn't see anything in here on it. Does that have any consideration in whether LAFCO allows a project, what potential exposure that students might have to pesticides? Because that's been a huge issue with Real Mesa High School.
Absolutely. And it goes both ways. You know, it's the impact of pesticides on the schools, but it's also an impact on agricultural activities. We want to see, we want to preserve ag. So, in our comment letter, we indicated that the school really does need to provide adequate buffers from that, the area to the west. We see that area to the west as a hard and fast line for ultimate city boundaries. This is in the curb. It's in the greenbelt. It's outside the sphere. The intent of LAFCO, at least at this point, is to keep that in ag. So, the school should approach its development as if that is going to stay agriculture for the foreseeable future. So, we encourage schools and anyone else that's going to be building near ag to consult with the Agricultural Commissioner's Office and develop adequate buffers that really will both protect the inhabitants, or in this case, students, and ongoing agricultural activities.
And there's some proposals, Mr. Mayor, that we have a buffer of 300 foot, you know. So, I'm not sure if that, you know, that some agencies are going to be concerned about that also.
Thank you very much.
Anna, do you have a, Natalie, excuse me, do you have a question?
A question regarding the environmental impact report, and when you were at, one of the comments, or as the procedure goes, you have to adopt that EIR. Do you, John, do you have the EIR pretty thoroughly, and so, for instance, Commissioner Long's comment about the 2002 letter maybe perhaps not being accurate anymore, if that landed in that EIR, would you pick something like that out and say, "Not relevant? We need some pressure"?
Well...
Updated, amended.
That all happens during the EIR preparation process, so the school will do a draft EIR. They'll send that out to all the agencies, and then the agencies will look at it and say, "Well, no, you need to expand this" or this. But the responsible agencies can only comment on the areas that they're going to have jurisdiction over. So, they can't weigh, like, we wouldn't weigh into, you know, traffic necessarily because that's kind of out of our purview. But then we comment, and then the school district has to respond to those comments and say why they don't agree with them, or they provide additional analysis. And then they publish that as the final EIR. Now, once the final EIR is done, it's done. You really can't go back in, except under very narrow circumstances, and revisit that as a responsible agency, which would be what the city and LAFCO does. LAFCO, fortunately, has such broad authority that we don't necessarily have to rely on an EIR because LAFCO law gives us the tools to get pretty much any information we need outside of the environmental process. So, LAFCO could, you know, look at that. But again, we would rather see the city, you know, do that before it gets to LAFCO.
And Bill?
For the, for Kip and your folks, is it possible to, if the letter is generated, to make sure that you put the traffic patterns overlaid on the, do an airborne showing, superimposed on the ground track so that it makes some sense?
So, okay, so, Bert?
You mentioned outside of environmental. You don't look at the pesticide issue? If the soils have pesticide in or anything like that?
That would be out, yeah, that's outside of LAFCO's purview. So, we wouldn't look at that. But again, that's something the city can certainly consider.
Okay, so, any other, I know the authority had quite a few concerns over the site, and it was, that's why it was brought to the attention of the authority. And there's three recommendations. Any other questions, Mr. Mayor?
I just wanted to make one final comment, and that is, the, somewhere in the report, I saw that when the school district was looking at the sites, or was coming up with the sites, and then you get into this alternative analysis, I think there were four sites that were identified. Three out of the four sites were in the TPZ zone. And what's interesting about this is that the Oxnard Union High School District, which is separate from the Oxnard Elementary School District, it's not a unified school district. They're not, they're separate. They're separate entities. So, it's Oxnard Union. That's because schools used to be over in Newbury Park and everything else, so it was a union of almost the whole county of high schools. And then there's the Oxnard Elementary School District. But the Oxnard Union High School District, in its most recent deliberations over where to locate a new high school, actually decided not to build a high school off of Woolly Road and Victoria because of this, if I'm not mistaken, the TPZ zone and its proximity to the airport. So, it's, I don't understand, and I don't know if that's a factor for LAFCO to decide too, why one jurisdiction, a high school district, would not locate a school in an area because of its proximity to the airport, but another school district would. So, that's just, I'm dumbfounded by that. So, there's a lack of consistency there.
A new high school's over at the Mulholland property?
And now, that new high school is, yes, off of, proposed off of Rose and Camino del Sol. But they specifically chose that site because all the other sites were problematic for a variety of reasons, but the one that was rejected off of Woolly and Victoria, I think, was in the TPZ zone, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think you're right. We also had a lot of comments on that one as well that may have influenced their decision.
Any additional, Doctor?
One other comment on the staff report, six three A, two D. Where indicated that the district provides fair disclosure to parents of children attending the location of the airport, the traffic pattern of the airport and potential impact. But that seemed like horses out of the born.
Yeah, it's already built.
We ought to talk to the parents because, you know, I'm sitting here listening to all this stuff. I swear I was back in Washington, you know, all these different agencies and stuff. It's just common sense. Why the hell would you want a school right next to an airport? That's crazy. We should have somewhere I talk to the parents, "Do you want Johnny over there playing under the airplane? It's like turning the kid to play on the freeway."
And that's exactly what, how we fought, you know, the one Soria School at the time, you know. Because of, because of that reason, you know, and you're right, that, you know, maybe, you know, we...
Well, it is also in environmental justice of, you put this school there, many of those people might only be able to walk to their new school, and so they have no choice to go anywhere else. So, even though you get this letter that says, "Hey, by the way, I'm just letting you know that, you know, there's airport close by," they might not be able to make a choice in that manner. So, we have to look out for them.
And environmental justice is a good point on it, too, that we can share that, too, you know, so.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'm not taking on Supervisor Long on this one, but if it comes to, and please...